Ms. Mina, come to order. Hammond City Council Public Hearing, September 24th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Public hearing, none. We'll move into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
I'll ask you for all stand for the prayer and pledge, and ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
I ask that we take a moment to pay honor and respect to the officer who lost his life over in Manville Police Department. Most gracious, loving Father, we just thank you right now, give you glory and honor and praise that is due your name. Thank you, Father, that this is the day that you have made. We shall rejoice and we shall be glad about it. We thank you that your darling son gave his life that we too would have access to the tree of life. Now, Father God, we thank you that everything will be done decent and orderly and pleasing and in your sight. We ask that you continue to bless the city of Hammond, continue to bless our council, continue to bless the police, continue to cover them, guide them, continue to bless our fire department, continue to bless our city administration right now, Father God, because if there's ever time we need you, we need you right now. So we just ask you to continue to let that light shine upon our path so that others may see the good work that we're doing. And therefore, Father, you will get all the glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's go veterans and active military to render the proper salute.
We lead the citizens' flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reports, have any council reports?
Yes, I have.
Councilman Andrews.
On September the 28th, I will be hosting over at the Hammond Rec Center a youth summit. Today, I spent the majority of my morning going to all the schools in Hammond to talk with the administration, the principals, to give them information on what we're going to be doing on that Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. We have two main topics that we will deal with on that morning. One is human sex trafficking and bullying. But we have a panel set in place for other things that we will discuss and talk with our youth. So we're looking at an age group in between the ages of 12 to 21. So I'm encouraging anyone that know any youth to get them out that Saturday morning over to the rec center. Also, is Ms. Rebecca in the audience?
Yes.
And Ms. Davis, could you please come forward, please? I received some emails from these ladies, and I asked them to please come out. They wanted to address the council. Either one of you would like to go first?
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rebecca Bossarge, 14491 West Muscarello in Hammond, 70401. Good evening. My name is Rebecca, and I'm here as a concerned mother hoping to make you aware of the lack of concern that's been shown for the kids who attend Hammond Westside. I have a five-year-old son who attends this school, so I'm there in carpool to drop him off and pick him up every day. Since school has started, I've seen Hammond Police Department show up late, if they show up at all, stand with their hands in their pockets, play on their cellphone, talk to each other, and ignore the buses and parents that are coming and going with the kids, and trying to merge safely onto the busy highway. There's very little action on the part of the officers. Rarely do they use their arms to flag traffic, so people are still confused on who's to pull out and when. I've seen them sit in their units on a rainy day during active school zone hours and just use their units to block traffic. Morning drop-off starts at 7:55, and I've seen them sitting in the parking lot of Michael's Seafood at 7:53, unwilling to work even two minutes early. I've seen them sitting in that same place at 8:03 instead of directing. I've watched buses get backed up and cut off due to the lack of direction the officers are showing. Just last week alone, not one Hammond Police Department unit showed up for afternoon carpool for four out of five days in the afternoon. Not one. You have all driven on South Morrison. On a good day, it's a busy place, for when rush hour and a school zone and it's a disaster waiting to happen. There's a light at school zone sign located on South Morrison that has not worked once since school started. People do not slow down willingly, and they fly through the school zone with complete disregard for that sign. With no law enforcement on sight to be a buffer, turning in and out of the school road is a major danger. The officers rarely wear their safety traffic vest, and therefore, they endanger their lives as well. I sent Hammond Police Department a private message on Facebook Messenger stating my concerns. The only reply I received was an automated and generic "thank you" while we get back to you. I waited a week and sent an email to the mayor. I waited another week and never heard from him either. So I contacted city council, and they were kind enough to reply to my concerns. I'm here today hoping that something can be done to enforce the officer directing traffic, show up and do their job to protect the children. I've been an avid supporter of law enforcement for many years, but I'm tired of watching the human, I'm sorry, the leader of the department worry more about politics while disregarding human life. Having the titles doesn't make you exempt from honesty and humble integrity. You find a problem, you fix it to the best of your ability. You don't use lies and political clout to place the blame on innocent people. Your job description's simple. You protect and serve with the Corps. That includes our children.
Good evening. My name is Carol Davis, 910 East Hanson Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, 70403. I'm here on behalf of the Emmanuel Seven Day Adventures Preschool and School. We're located right down the street, 702 North Cherry Street. I have contacted via telephone and text messages numerous of times in hopes of receiving an answer concerning these matters. An officer on patrol during Monday through Thursday, during the hours of 7:15 to 8:15, 2:40 to 3:15, and on Friday, 7:15 to 8:15, to 1:45 to 2:15. We have a lot of vehicles not adhering to the school zone rules. I myself do not have a child there, but as the school treasurer, I see parents who are concerned whether people are not adhering to those rules. Years before, we used to have a crossing guard. We asked about a crossing guard, or if we could have a police to patrol. Not once have we had a police to patrol. We do see the police, or I do see the police, doing, not doing the school zone hours. It's whenever, and I have seen them ticket people, but not during the times that's needed, when the parents are crossing their children across the street to get to the school. We are a small school, but we are a school, and we care about our children. Also, I had asked about if we can get the flashing lights so to let us know, let oncoming traffic know that it is a school zone. Normally, when school zone is in, a flashing light is on, so people will be aware that they're doing that. People are over there speeding and on their cellphones during this time. We, as citizens, we cherish our lives and the children's lives. Thank you, and have a blessed day.
Chief, did you want to respond?
As far as the officers that direct school zone in South Morrison, we did receive the complaint. The male that called it in to me, he was given the phone number to our traffic division, the address, I mean, the extension, and I don't know if they ever contacted them. I talked to the traffic lieutenant, and he said he never received any calls from them. As far as the school zone over there, Councilman Andrews had reached out to me, and we have run traffic in the morning. There have been several citations issued during the schooltime hours for people speeding. I believe it's a private school. I know that years ago, they, I guess, engaged in an agreement with the Tangbo Parish School Board, and that's why we direct traffic out there. Yeah, no other private schools within the city. We actually go out and direct traffic. It could be fairly taskful to put an officer at every single school district. In saying that, we've recreated our traffic division, and I'm actually splitting there times to where part of the traffic division's going to be coming in to handle school zone hours, working traffic, running radar in school zones for the morning and the evening times. So that's one thing that we're doing to try to at least slow down the traffic that's in there. As far as permanently assigning a traffic person there, I guess I'd have to get with the mayor and the city administration to see what we can do to try to get the personnel to be able to assign somebody every single day, you know, to direct traffic.
Private schools, we generally do not have traffic out there for them unless they pay for it, Holy Ghost included. They do crossing guards. The flashing light is something that I think we can work with. Robert Morgan, we can look into getting a flashing light. That's a good idea on Cherry Street. As far as addressing what the individual was talking about at Hammond Westside.
You know, the officers get there, they have a certain amount of time or a section of time in which they direct the traffic. A lot of times, officers get there prior to the time in which they're supposed to direct the traffic. They turn their lights on. They don't stand in traffic and direct traffic until it's necessary to stand in traffic and direct traffic. So, yeah, I think the day in question in which it was, we were able to look at the body cameras and the dash cams, and, you know, at the time in which she come out, there was no traffic coming through. An officer did stop and look at his, a text message had come through on his phone. He was the guy that was controlling the southbound traffic. And the southbound traffic guy, that's all he's responsible for is those two lanes, and that's it. He was the supervisor. He got a text, he turned it on, and I did speak with him about that. You know, he picked his phone, looked up, and had to put it back. But, you know, as far as him leaning against the cars prior to, yes, that happens. You know, they get out there and they turn their lights on just to slow the traffic down, and that's what happens until it gets to a certain point when they then have to step out and start directing traffic.
Do you have anything?
One more thing.
Thank you, Chief.
I wanted to take this time to, see my other group is not here, to acknowledge one of the businesses that's in my district and has been in operation for over 88 years. Anybody from the staff, do you have anything to come up with, please? I also have a flag for a certificate to give to St. James. I see one that showed up. But I just want to start acknowledging businesses and people out of my community that's in the district. And it brings a certificate of appreciation, this knowledge that N.A. James Kinnon has enriched the community with such dedication for over 88 years of service. This day, September the 24th, compliments this people and your brand of donors. Congratulations to that, on the business. It's the oldest, one of the oldest businesses in our district. And I want to congratulate you, tell you what the people have been doing.
Any other council members? Council reports.
I wanted to ask, Robert, did you ever look at that erosion problem on 601? I was out of town. I don't know if you, did you get a chance to look at on 601 Edwin Neil Way? Okay. What's going on with that over there? Is there?
It needs the same frequency visually as they did between Edwin Neil and Morris. I think that was part of the alternative bid for the last project they did. That's just something that probably is going to be gathered up to do.
Is that like on another phase? Is that, or that's something that needs to be added to? Is that like on the second phase of that project that was done on Morris and that one, Lacy? Okay.
We just got it.
Add it.
Add it to, okay. All right.
And I have something. Well, we met together, we met today on the issue about the subcontractors going in the people yard. And so, well, he sat there and told me from now on what they're going to do. They're going to have letters before they go in anybody yard to do any work. And so I want to appreciate him to reaching out to let me know what was going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve? Mayor? Mayor report?
In saying that, I appreciate you getting with them before we get to the meeting, so they have ample time to get out there and meet with you and address this issues before we get to the council meeting and not be able to know exactly what's being talked about. So we appreciate the cooperation there. We also had a very successful event with the downtown, Destination Downtown group from Arkansas, Mississippi, and Louisiana. They meet and talk about how revitalization on downtowns have been done in other states across the country. We're one of the top 10 downtowns in the country nationally that have had people come in and spend dollars on buildings and make the downtown look the way it does here. Normally, these events have about 100 people. We actually had the largest event that they've ever had, over 250 people that wanted to come down and see what has happened here in Hammond. Arkansas said we had the best hospitality of any event that they've been to. So kudos to everyone in the city of Hammond and downtown and all the owners that have really come and invested in our city and made it what it is today. So, thank you.
Now, sure, Ken?
I forgot, and it just popped in my mind. Also, I'd like to thank the students from Southeastern that came out. Last Thursday, I believe it was, or Friday. They came out and they painted this splash pad over in the park. And it was a nice group that came out, and I really appreciate them taking their time to volunteer to deposit back in the hammer while they're here. So I was really pleased with that.
Now for our minutes of September 10th, 2019. I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we accept our minutes from our September 10th meeting.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
And now for old business. Number one, appeal by Melanie Ricketts of a decision of the Hammond Historic District Commission for Kate Square Park new construction for restrooms that was approved on August 21st, 2019. As Kate Square is in District 2, I'm going to take the lead on this, make a couple comments before making a motion. We obviously can have public comment on that. The last time we had a meeting, we had some great dialogue and arguments both for and against the bathrooms. However, the issue before us for this item is a resolution, is an appeal of the historic district and whether they acted outside of their purview and guidelines for approving the design and placement of a bathroom in the park. Well, I guess I'm showing my hand here, but personally, I think, and personally and as a mother, I think we need a bathroom near or in the park. I'm here as a District 2 representative, and the citizens that have reached out to me were from District 2. The majority of them were against this. There are some other items on this agenda where we will address whether to award bids for Kate's, Kate'sburg Park, and then this discussion on whether that's a good idea. We're probably more appropriate there. I don't believe that we, there are any grounds to reverse the historic district. I'm going to make a motion to deny the appeal. However, if there's anyone who wants to get up and discuss before we take a vote on that, or there's a second on that, let me know now.
Do you want that now? Or do you want us to wait until I am two in the next?
If, I would say if you want to, I mean, public comment is anytime, but specifically as to whether the historic district should be, appeal should, if their decision should be reversed, that's what this item is for.
I'm simply addressing the issue of the construction at Kate Park generally.
If you want to come up and speak now, that would be fine.
No problem.
I drive down Roberts Street every day, and this beautiful spacious green park we know as Kate Street Park is always refreshing with little groups of adults sitting at the tables, others strolling down sidewalks, and children running through the green grassy areas. There are so few places in our town where children can run and play in such an area. I also drive past Orange Street Park almost every day. The ominous cinder block structure near the street on Illinois now obscures the green space, and children cannot be watched from the parking area. Our once oasis little park in that area now seems cluttered, and the playground equipment jutting behind the recently constructed toilets is more garish than inviting. It breaks my heart to know that the city is now attempting to make our little oasis near the vintage train station another garish commercial area, already surrounded by apartments and commercial buildings. Restrooms are not needed there. Most of the people who use the park live nearby. The toilet structures are more likely to attract transients and provide cover for questionable or violent offenders bent on harming innocent visitors to the park. These suggested problems can be debated by those more likely to profit by the proposed changes. Three critical issues are outstanding. One, the reduction of green space so badly needed in that area, particularly with the proposed Farmer's Market Pavilion soon to be built. Number two, the probable change from quiet space to noise from children and teens drawn from outside this primarily adult neighborhood. As I passed by the park on the way here this evening, there was a young adult with her computer sitting at one of the tables quietly working in that refreshing space. I see this every day. The imposing commercial playground structures obstructing the openness and conflicting with the existing rustic swings, sandboxes, and other equipment visually compatible with the natural surroundings, I oppose. For the past 20 years, Hammond has been constant and amazing in improvements, especially in the downtown area. These improvements, though not as obvious as in the past 10 years, continue. In all the changes, the downtown park has also improved but has retained its natural ambiance and charm in the midst of residential and commercial growth. I would ask the council to do the right thing in this area, which is more than a neighborhood park. We would be remiss if we did not appreciate the efforts of Charles Borchers and his incredible ability to write successful grants, including the one to help finance the Kate Park changes. However, this area belongs to all of Hammond. This is where we have picnics, free movies, birthday parties, and where we can breathe fresh air and openness from the congestion all around that area. Hopefully, you will oppose the proposed restroom and McDonald's-like playground, which will seriously diminish the much-needed green space, so revered by the families who provided the foundation for our city. Spend the grant money somewhere else and allow us to keep our downtown oasis.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
I beg your pardon, I should have done that in the beginning. I know better. My name is Dr. Louise Bostick, and my address is 112 Elm Drive. And I'm sure you have that, Tanya. I apologize.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Melanie Ricketts. I live at 607 Joe Parrish Drive. And I originally submitted this appeal at the last meeting. And Councilwoman Gonzalez, I appreciate your reviewing the appeal. The ordinance also says that you can modify a finding of the historic district. My concern is, is if the approval of this project isn't appealed, they still retain their certificate of appropriateness. And a certificate of appropriateness is issued when the historic district reviews and approves an application. When that COA is issued, that gives them permission to move forward to building and to other regulatory bodies. So it would basically, without redacting that COA, I believe you could redact the COA without overturning the historic district's decision. So I would hope that you would take that into account, because if they still have a COA, it's basically, you know, kind of a moot point. And I think it's been very obvious that there has been a lack of public input on this, and there's been a lot of public input since the appeal came up. And I think it's been confusing for people. This wasn't, you know, should there or should there not be a bathroom there? Because that's already been determined, and I have an issue with that. Something came up in the last meeting that I thought might also be a resolution. Councilman Wells, we're talking about Mooney Park and how money had been set aside for Mooney Park until some decisions had been made. So I'm asking that the same thing be done for Kate Square, because there, I, actually, I have something for you all. This is addressed to Councilwoman Gonzalez, because it's her district. But this is a petition with 69 signatures of people who either live around or visited the park.
I have no spoken last night.
Yes, I have spoken several, council member. Like I said, I think it's apparent that the majority of the people who live around the park, even people who are in the park, are unaware of the changes that are made. So the 69 people who signed this petition, some of them are, they are not all opposed to the restroom. Some of them were in favor of the restroom, and some of them were opposed. But they all agreed that there should be more public input. And because of some of the questionable data gathering on the pro side, there's some very specific requests here. And I'll read how the petition reads. Dear Ms. Gonzalez, at the city council meeting on September 10th, 2019, you heard several of your constituents and members of the community voice concerns over the design of the restrooms plan for Kate Square. Though many comments referred to safety, cleanliness, and fiscal responsibility, the most prevalent concern was the almost complete lack of public input on the project. Because the park is within your district, the residents have signed this letter respectfully asking that you request that the restrooms plan for Kate Square be removed from the bid process until the plans can be properly vetted by the community. We feel that should include the following. In addition to the current architectural drawing, we would like to see a color rendering of the restroom facility drawn to scale, showing the precise location of the restroom in relation to the gazebo, trees, sidewalks, and residences. A 3D model of the structure to show the height, depth, and width and its relation to the intersection at Oak and West Gerald Street. This would give residents the opportunity to see how visible the structure will be for motorists at this busy intersection. It would also better serve residents who are not accustomed to reading architectural drawings to understand the true location of the structure within the environment. Samples of the materials that will be used should be presented as no materials or colors were included in the application of the Historic District Commission. The input of a park planning professional outside of the current architectural firm, hopefully, this is something that would be part of the planning for all parks. But due to the highly visible nature of Kate Square, a professional opinion would be extremely valuable. And it sounds like there's some questions about some of the other parks as well. All of the above materials should be presented either near the park or in the park, and at least two charrettes where residents and visitors can offer ideas and comments in person, not online, as there's been a lot of manipulation of that. We feel these are standards and expectations for the design and planning for a project of this scale, and that they are necessary to ensure the best outcome for all the residents, visitors, and neighbors to this very special part of Hammond. So, again, I think without overturning the historic district's approval of the project, it could cause problems. I also, before you even get to it, I will say that I oppose any moving of money from surplus to the budget for this project before there can be proper public input. So, thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Yes, sir?
Ma'am, can you tell them about what we talked about last night, about the young lady that you had met over in the park? And how many parks she passed by to get to that park?
One of the things that I tried to do was I tried to ask people questions without leading them, like, have you heard that there's going to be a restroom in the park? And there were people who were, you know, not opposed to that. But not one of the people that I talked to thought that that was the best location for it. And they had a lot of concerns about the traffic at that corner. And I, while I was there, I just asked people how often they visited the park and why they came to that park. And I talked to a young mother, her name was April, and she has a four-year-old daughter. And I said, well, where do you live? And she said, she told me where she lived, and she passed North Oaks to get to Kate Square. I said, well, why don't you go to those other parks? And she said, I don't feel safe. I prefer to come here because it's open, and there are people around. North Oaks is set off the street, Zemurray's set off the street, and I'm afraid of shootings and fights. And I said, well, you've heard about that on social media, or you've read about it. And she said, no, I've witnessed it. And it's not something I'm willing to subject her to. So people are passing up parks that have restrooms to come to Kate Square regardless of whether there's a restroom there or there are not, because it's open, and people feel safe there. And so it looks like the real problem isn't that there aren't restrooms, it's that some of the parks, people have the, you know, and for some of them, it's a reality, that those parks aren't safe. And it makes more sense to me to put the money in making those parks safe, because luckily, April could get in her car and come to Kate Square. parks safe, because luckily, April could get in her car and come to Kate Square. But people, children who live in apartments, who live near those parks that don't have transportation, that's the park that they have to choose. And if that's the reality that they're, you know, the perception is that it's unsafe, that seems like a bigger problem than a bathroom in a park that hasn't had one in 72 years.
Thank you.
North Oaks Park does not have restrooms.
Okay. Well, she was talking about North Oaks, Zemurray, and some of the other parks, but she came there specifically, and it didn't impact her visiting, and she saw problems in other parks.
Well, as you said, this is a two-headed story. You have 60-plus people that you have, that you have petitioned, and there's 60-plus people that are, it's definitely a split, Carly and I were talking about. Carly has a child, and I think she thinks that bathrooms need it. I live a block away, and I can see the concerns of people that don't live as close, and also see the concerns of other people that think there shouldn't be a park. So, that being said, you know, we have a divided consensus.
So the other 69, are you referring to the petition and the emails that the administration gathered?
Correct. And why, for any instance, would you think that that was skewed?
Because a petition is an instrument that is used by citizens to demand something of the administration or the government, not the other way around. And if, and looking at the names on this petition, they're, the architect of the project, you signed the petition.
I lived there.
Ms. Alma signed the petition, you know...
So people who live in Hammond can't have say in what can be used?
Yes, they sure can, but I think that for city employees to take time out of their day to send 35-plus emails is above and beyond.
You have just said that we didn't receive public input about the project, that we didn't reach out to anybody and talk about the project.
Two years ago, when the budget passed, this is...
That's because the people had already come to us. These are the same people who have come over and over again. We could have taken the petition to all the events that have been at that park over the last two weeks, and we probably could have had 200 signatures. The point is, there's people who are in favor of the park, who are in favor of restrooms. There are people who, time and time again, it comes down to the parents, who say, "I don't want to take my child over to PJ's. I came to the park because it's a free place. It's a place where we can enjoy the day together, and it's easier to not have to bring a change of clothes or to not have to tell my child to pee on a tree." I talked to a mom, just like you've been talking to people, and I realize that you want to say things were skewed, or things were not appropriate, or whatever.
I never said things were skewed.
But we all had these same conversations. We've done this time and time again when we've built playgrounds, when we've done other outreach, that you go there and you listen to the people who are there. And as you said, on your petition, people were just unaware. I understand what you're requesting in terms of additional public input. We certainly try to do that, and we can certainly do that more going forward with our projects.
Which we could have done that two weeks ago. We could have had public input at the last meeting. We could have had the drawing here 30 minutes before, instead of spending time sending up 35 additional emails.
Do you remember when we had the hill with the bridge that people used to walk under?
Mm-hmm.
And when you would walk under that bridge, what did you smell?
People complained about the bridge, because people...
People using the bathroom there, because it was the only hidden spot where a lot of people would do that.
Right. Agreed. I agree. Just one, I just have to make a point, because I don't, it, one of the emails that was sent out was to people who were coming to the park, and it said, "We're looking for support from people who have used or plan to use the park for events. We have one citizen opposed, and we want to be able to show the need for the project. Would you support improvements if they were only open during the day, locked overnight, and cleaned daily?" Even the people that I talked to in the park that agreed with that did not agree with where it was placed, did not agree with the design, and they had ideas that would benefit them and their children. So I'm not, my debate was never here, whether or not to have one or not, it was whether we were meeting the needs of the people who were asking for it and the people who were opposed to it. And I am baffled as to why that is such a problem.
I think it's a problem. I think it's going to be addressed shortly.
Thanks. Thank you. Go ahead.
Shouldn't we just speak to you?
I'm sorry, no, we had...
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, um, so...
Name an address for the record.
John Exnicious, 111 North Magnolia, directly across from the park. Shame on me for being late to the game on really knowing what's even going on, and I'm not going to sound as eloquent as either of these two ladies. I'm coming as a citizen who lives there across the park. I also think I bring some value, because I do own two properties directly across from Clark Park, where the cinder block monstrosity has been built, and I hate to say monstrosity, but it is very ugly, and that is a very nice park. And that park has had crime issues. I have a bullet hole through, actually, one of my mailboxes at 507 East Illinois. So, I think I do come with some value with where I think fear mongering on crime and all this related to a bathroom, I don't agree with that. Crime can happen anywhere, but I do think that this is a small park in the middle of a neighborhood, and that when this, I'm all, I don't have kids, so I can, but if I put myself from your perspective, Carly, I would say, I take my kids to the park, I don't want to have a place to take them to the bathroom without having to lug them back home. But from my perspective, just in my short time living there, I have had a homeless man wake me out in my car, waiting for me to get out, so they can panhandle in my driveway. That's uncomfortable. There are people, because we're in the middle of where the city meets the neighborhood, that kind of pass through there, and in my life experience, closed-off bathrooms can be an opportunity for people to meet for drug trafficking, sex, and other things. Not to say that I did those things in my life experience. Correct. So, but it's just general understanding of how that works. So what I'm saying here is, I'm not against it, because I believe that we need to progress and make our town better, but I would like to really have a lot more knowledge about what is that going to look like? Is there going to be a visibility? Somebody saying that it's going to be locked up at night? I'm sorry, I'm not a, in front of government, I'm not really a pro-government guy. I don't believe, I believe when budgets need to be cut, things get lax, and there's already structure there that needs to be maintained, and that's going to be in front of my house. I'm also letting you know, I just bought 221 West Thomas, right around the corner, across from PJ's, that there'll be businesses there that I'm going to be involved in that may have people come knock on the door to go to the bathroom, because there's not a bathroom there. So I'm trying to look at this both sided, but I feel like I'm just coming to the late to the game. There were some things on Facebook talking about sewage, about, "Our sewage is so bad, and we're putting $80,000 towards the bathroom. Where are our priorities?" I can tell you, the property that I own, one of the properties on Holly, across from Clark Park, is backing up to a canal that every time, I had to get a backup thing to prevent my tenants from having sewage overflow into their property. When I was doing construction at 111 Magnolia, we had issues with drainage every time a high rain came, there was issues. These are all different topics that I don't even know, I'm way late to the game on, but I just want to say as a resident, are we putting the money in the right place? And if we are going to put it there, are we being very wise in how we build it? You know, is this place going to have electricity? You know, is it going to be open to where it's a visible scene, so people can see if there are people? I don't know the rules on that park. If there's not supposed to be people out there at night, and it's supposed to be closed after a certain time, I can tell you, that's not being followed, because there's people there, you know? So I don't trust necessarily government to monitor a bathroom, because at the end of the day, I feel like that's not going to be a priority when money is tight, and that's across the street from my house. So that's all I have to say, and that's just me being very honest and not trying to piss anybody off, but that's how I feel about it. But I do have, I could see your perspective, though, and I would be open to it if I just knew more about it. So, that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your investment in our community as well, for all the buildings and the money you've invested. The park, I do understand, before I took the administration, we had porta-pots everywhere. The parks are open at dawn, closed at dusk. We clean the parks, the Rec Department cleans the parks. I do understand, and I couldn't say if I wasn't in government, what would happen after that. I would hope that government will continue to do the same things with the bathrooms. The whole plan was to build them as safely as we could, to where it was one door, one entry, one toilet commode, and a changing room, so someone could go in and close the door and lock it behind them. I understand your concerns, and there are a lot of concerns that the council needs to consider.
Name an address for the record, please.
For those of y'all that know me, I'm Jenny Garcia, Director of the Hammond Historic District Commission. I don't have 77 pages today with me, but I did put something together real briefly, and I appreciate you addressing the fact that the Historic District Commission did follow the guidelines, and I do feel like their review was appropriate. However, I'm going to cut this really short. I don't feel like that's why we're here, and I don't want to misspeak for Ms. Ricketts. I feel like her goal is public input, and she sees this as her only venue for that. I know the Historic District makes all of our meetings public, applications are made public, it's posted on social media, newspapers, our website, it's all over the place. So I see both sides of the issue. I know my commissioners saw both sides of the issue, and this is a very small bathroom, but from what I'm hearing, I think maybe we need to find a creative solution. I don't know what to tell you how to vote or how we're going to move forward, but I do feel like public restrooms are, you know, beneficial for the city. So I just hope that we can all come together for a solution that makes everybody happy, and I'm glad to know that my commissioners did follow the guidelines under your review of this appeal. So I just wanted to say that.
Any other questions or comments?
Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive. I don't know exactly how to say this, but you know, Ms. Ricketts has presented a very well outlined and succinct presentation, and I just want to say, I resent the attack personally on her as she tried to do that presentation. It may not have been personal, may not have been attacked, but it sounded like one. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a, okay, so there's a motion on the table, which was to deny the appeal. If there's any second or substitute motion.
I'll second it, just as a point of clarification, this is not about bathrooms or not bathrooms, it's just about whether the commission did their, basically did their job.
I just want to make one other comment, too. I want to thank Ms. Ricketts for bringing this to our attention. I don't, yeah, I feel just like everybody else does, as far as the historic committee did their job. I think this was our only way of getting this attention on this matter. I think there's a lot of opposed opposition for having these bathrooms there in that park, and I'm glad that it's came to light. So I want to thank y'all for coming up here and stating y'all's concerns about the bathrooms in the park, because I think majority, from what I've heard, have a lot of concern about that particular park with bathrooms, and I'm glad that's here now. Not too sure how it got to this point without people in that area knowing about it or whatnot. I mean, it was before my time went here. I wouldn't have been in favor of them then, and I'm not in favor of them as of right now, but I do think that the historic committee did their job as far as what their duties and their guidelines are. So I just want to make that clear before I make my vote.
Roll call, please. Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Motion approved to deny appeal.
Number one, new business, number one, a resolution to approve Budget Transfer Form 20-01, that one transfers $84,000 from surplus available funds, two combines these funds with those from two projects, MLK Restrooms and Kate Square Restrooms, and renames the project MLK Kate Park Improvements, for a total of $284,000. I'm going to make a motion to amend this. Andre, help me out if this is not correct, but a motion to amend that where we're only a resolution to approve budget, no, I'm sorry, a motion to combine the funds from those two projects into one project. Does that work?
So let me ask this question, what are you trying to do, remove appropriation for the Kate Square Restrooms?
So the first thing, my motion does not allow the transfer of $84,000 from surplus funds. There are, right now, in our budget, a line item for MLK bathrooms and a line item for Kate Square bathrooms. Together, those could fund MLK bathrooms without that transfer. Is that right? Correct. So I want to...
Transfer money to be applied to the MLK restroom?
Yes.
So you want to amend this item to read that you transfer $84,000?
No, 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 no.
I think what you, yeah, help me out here.
Yeah, I think what you could do to make this the simplest way is you could transfer the money from the Kate Square restroom project into the Martin Luther King restroom project. So you could transfer funds from Project 11911 into 11913.
That's my motion.
That would be the simplest motion.
And that way, no sur...
Yes, the funds in Kate Square are $80,000. The funds in Martin Luther King are $120,000.
So you want to transfer the $80,000 from the Kate Square project to the MLK?
Yes.
And that way, and no surplus funds would be used?
No surplus.
Right.
So we would need how much from Martin Luther King? 154, 159, 149, what was it, from Martin Luther King's bid?
I think it's 174 total.
174. And we have how much?
The base bid, the low, apparent low bidder for the base bid was, MLK was $150,900.
$150,000, all right. And we have $80,000 right now budgeted towards Kate Street?
You have $120 for MLK.
Okay, so we're short 30.
You're going to be short more than that, though. So the base bid for, is 100, can I borrow your pen, please? Is 150,900 plus $19,592 in architect funds, plus $3,500 in surveys.
What does that total?
Soft cost.
I'm working on that for you.
173?
492.
Okay.
That's why I was just suggesting, for now, the simplest way is to move that money. It sits in the project. If it's not used, it goes back to surplus available funds.
So we've just moved a whole 80 into that?
That's your simplest way. It's up to y'all, if you just want to move part of that, then it just sits in the other, in the Kate Square restroom project, the remainder would.
Maybe just add that, even though, really, which the total that she said was like 174...
Well, we could also move forward, because we're probably going to need more funding for the park and the MLKs.
Right.
Finish that project.
Or, and what I was going to say, P is contingency money for if unforeseen things come up during construction.
Yeah, you then have $200,000 sitting in one pot where you know what it is, rather than like, you know, $20,000 left over here and the rest of it going to MLK. It'll just make it, I think, simpler for y'all to keep up with in budget.
Any questions or comments?
So the motion is to amend this agenda item to transfer $80,000 from the Kate Square Restrooms project to the MLK Restrooms.
So that's the motion to amend, so we need a second.
I second that motion.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Now a motion to, on the amended, motion to approve the amended resolution. Need a second.
Oh, I second that motion.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to ratify bids for Hammond Park Improvements, Kate Square, and MLK Park, and award a contract for the base bid and alternative, additive alternate number one to JAC Construction of South Louisiana LLC for $249,500. Pierre Terrio, do you have?
Yep. So Pierre Terrio, Holly and Smith Architects, 208 North Kate Street, Hammond, Louisiana. We received bids last Thursday. We, this time, we received five responsible bids. The apparent low bidder is JAC Construction of the South Louisiana LLC, and the base bid, which was the MLK portion, was $150,900. The ad alternate number one was, Kate Square portion was $98,600. I guess we recommend accepting whatever y'all want to do.
Recommend accepting MLK?
The low bid.
The base bid.
I'll make a motion, and we can question. I make a, I move to accept the base bid while rejecting the alternate bid.
To JAC Construction.
To JAC Construction. Any comments or questions from the public or the council? Yes.
I object to accepting this bid because of the complete lack of public input. And I would suggest, before moving forward with any funds, that the request of the people within that district and that are within that park be respected.
For MLK?
No, for Kate Square.
This is for MLK.
Do we have to amend that off of that little, the Hammond Park Improvement, Kate Square, and ML? Do we need, do we need to eliminate that? Or is it just a general term on there?
One second. So the, the bids were, the, the base bid is for MLK project. And then the alternate was Kate Square. So my motion said to accept the base bid of MLK and not accept Kate Square.
Okay.
So it would not accept the bid for Kate Square. It would accept the bid for MLK so that MLK can be done.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, this is so confusing.
I second that motion.
Yeah. Did you, he had a point, though, about.
I was just, yeah, I was just asking. That might have, you might have cleared it up when you did the declining that. But just how it says Hammond Park Improvements, Kate Square, and MLK, do we need to amend that resolution to take off Hammond Park improved Kate Square? And just make it MLK?
Edit to alternate. So what she, her motion is, is to reject the alternate bid and accept the base bid. So I think it's.
So that clears that up, clarifies.
So there's a second roll call, please. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Just for, sorry, go ahead. Motion approved. Just for clarification, that we are doing the MLK project. And we have funded the MLK project. And we have rejected the Kate Square project and obviously not funded that.
Okay.
Number three, a resolution to reappoint Bill Travis to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term from June 15, 2019 to June 14, 2023.
Mr. Bill Travis has been with us since 2017, 12 years. And he also does the water testing throughout the region. All of the municipalities he's lived closest southeast from Maymont use, use a manusette to support or recommend to Bill Travis.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Oh, for Mr. Andre. What could we do after the change? Who pick the people to be on the board? It's five city councilmen. Is any way, I know not today, but is there any way that we can do anything for us picking the board and picking the commission as a city council?
You mean picking the individual members?
Yes.
Do you go to approve or not in the mayor's recommendation?
Yeah, I understand that. But I'm saying, what do we need to do for us in the future? There's nothing against Mr. Bill now. What can we do in the future for us picking people to be on the planning and zoning? Because one of the issues that I have, I see we got the planning and zoning, but how many people from his district? How many people from her district? How many people from his district? How many people from his district? Saying we got five city councilmen. And how many on this board that from each one of them from the district? And started to mail picking them? Why not, what we need to do as a city council, let the city councilmen start picking these boards and these commissions?
The process for this particular one is set by state statute. The mayor recommends and the council votes yes or no.
Okay, I understand what's going on today.
So the council can't on its own decide, I want to appoint someone to this planning and zoning. The mayor has to recommend it to the council. And you, if you don't like the person, you vote against it.
That, that's state statute, not the UDC?
And I think that's state statute, call, I'll check. It's kind of like the US Supreme Court, right? The president picks the justice and Senate decides. The Senate doesn't decide who's on the Supreme Court. President picks that, nominates that person to send votes. The mayor nominates a person to these boards and you decide whether to vote for them or against them. I'll double check that for you. But I think that's, that's how the state statute sets out planning and zoning. But I'll check it. And I don't mean that you can't communicate with me on someone that you might be interested in being on the board.
No, it's not that. Uh, just like the, the lady left out. When these people come up here to talk, it's like we attacking them. Seem like when I say something, I'm being attacked. I thought I was talking to Andre, but somehow I'm always getting feedback on every time I ask something or try to do something. When I try to talk to you, seem like we can't never get on the same page. Because I never get nothing done in my community. So I don't send you emails. I know you got Robert Morgan here. Robert Morgan come to the front. I already know how it gonna be. So I already know what's going on. That's all I wanted to know. What could we do as a city council? Because apparently, and what I'm looking at these appeals, we keep having these appeals. So what could we do, I'm talking about as a city councilman, that we can start recommending people? That's the only question I ask, you know? Uh, can you let me know something?
Yes, and you could recommend them to the mayor. But I'll double check that for you. You want planning and zoning in the historic district, those two commissions?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other comments on this item? Questions?
Mr. Bill, he isn't here tonight, huh?
Pleasure to counsel.
I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion to reappoint Bill.
A second. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number four, a resolution transferring $25,000 from the Grant Match Fund to Air Traffic Control Tower build out to proceed with the project. Charles Porches.
I'll try to keep this simple. This is actually related to the next line item, but you'll see. We opened bids on the 21st and our lowest responsive bidder is, is over what we have currently budgeted for the project. So what we're asking to do is transfer about $25,000 from the Grant Match Fund. I think we have a balance right now in that fund of about $400,000. That will give us enough funds to proceed with the low bid and also give us some contingency on top of that. That way, we don't have to come back to you guys. Hopefully, we'll have to come back to you guys to ask for additional funds. This is a project, I know I've been up here several times about it. This actually started way back in 2012. And we have finally been able to line up all of the funds minus this additional $25,000 to move forward. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So moving the money is because the bid was higher than expected, is that right?
Correct, yes ma'am.
How, let's see, $146,000 is what we've already put into it? Or that, does that include the $25,000?
That is what has currently been allocated to the project by the city.
And we were given $280,000?
Correct.
Okay. So it's still less than half that we're putting up for this project?
Correct.
Any questions or comments? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Number five, a resolution, one, ratifying the bids received August 21, 2019 in response to RFP 20-04, Air Traffic Control Tower Build Out, approving the award of the contract to the lowest responsible, responsible and responsive bidder pending approvals by granters and authorizing the mayor to enter into the contract following these granters' approvals.
So a few things, some of that language is state mandated. That's why it's a little cumbersome. With the $25,000, it's just been moved into the project account on the previous line item. We now have enough funds to move forward. There was an attachment of the two bids that we received. We actually had about five different companies over the course of the advertisement contact us. We had three contractors that attended a pre-proposal meeting at the tower. We actually went up inside, looked at the spaces, discussed any concerns they might have. Of those three, two submitted bids. The low bid is actually from the original contractor on the tower. So they're already familiar with the tower. They were the ones that built it originally. That's probably why they were able to give us such an affordable price. And we're ready to move forward. We're waiting on the state, which is funding about a third of the project, to weigh in on the bid process and confirm that this is the apparent low bidder according to state law. I think that's a formality. That, but that's why the language is in here that way, to make sure that we have their approval before we sign any contract.
Where is Spartan Building Corporation out of?
They have an office in Madisonville, I believe.
They built the original tower.
Right. Questions or?
I would also just say they used a lot of local subcontractors when they did that, so.
Good. Anyone else? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number six, a resolution, one, accepting the Apache Foundation Tree Grant of 100 native trees for the city's annual Louisiana Arbor Day tree giveaway and to authorizing the mayor or his designated complete and sign related documents. Charles.
This one's really simple. This is just accepting 100 free trees. If, if, some of you may have actually participated for the last, I think, seven years now. Our Keep Hammond Beautiful Committee has actually through Arbor Day, on Louisiana Arbor Day, through the Apache Foundation, been able to give away trees to our citizens. We keep getting encouraged to ask for more. This year, we asked for more and we got all of the ones we asked for. So we're, we're very happy about that. Louisiana Arbor Day is the third Friday in January. I think that's the 18th. I might have it in here somewhere. The 17th, January 17th.
They planted trees at the, in MLK this past January. Yeah, they.
These 100 native trees, are they 100 diff, not 100 different ones? They're just 100 native trees total?
Yeah, usually, I think this year, we're thinking of doing four varieties, the more popular varieties, so 25 of each. I think that's how it's going to work out. We basically try to gauge that. I, I'm not involved in the gauging. That's, that's the Keep Hammond Beautiful Committee. But from what I understand, they try to gauge the numbers of each type of tree based on the demand from the previous year. So there are four types of trees that have been just very popular. And that's what we're going to try to focus on this year. They're fairly nice sized trees as well.
I tell you, I was out there this past, this past year, helping give out, watching them give it out. I was amazed at the, the size of the trees. They're very, very nice trees. And I mean, the people that came through, they were just, they were just elated. So that's a, it's a pretty nice project.
Yeah, I think, I think since we started, I think we've added about 600 or 700 trees to our tree canopies. This will be another 100. So that's pretty, pretty good deal. There's no match, it's free.
Yeah, pleasure to the counsel.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Number seven, sorry. Number seven, a resolution supporting the submission of a $2,500 Energy Open Grants Program application for STEM programming within the Hammond After School Program. Charles.
This one's pretty self-explanatory. We've been encouraged by some local representatives to go ahead and submit a $2,500 grant to the Energy Open Grant Program. It's a corporate program, but the local offices have a say and somewhat of a say in who gets funded. So they're going to advocate on our behalf if we so choose to submit an application. So hopefully, we'll get $2,500.
Sounds good. Questions or comments? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Number eight, a resolution to accept Zemurray Park Pool renovation as substantially complete and to begin the 45-day lien period. Chris Bankston.
Chris Bankston, Gasway Bankston Architects, 1007 West Thomas, Hammond. So on September 11th, a design team and our consultants went out to the site and to do our inspection, the contractor had called for us to do their substantial completion inspection. We went through everything. We have a punch list. But we find that this project is substantially complete and ready for acceptance with the change order.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, please. Uh, on this project, who went out and did the inspection on the project, saying it was completed?
Uh, myself, our mechanical engineer, our structural engineer, electrical engineer, our civil engineer.
I'm talking about from the city?
Oh, from the city. Charles was with us. And then we also had the fire marshal come through, so.
And then CC Genu's been there every week.
Yeah, CC's been with us.
Robert Morgan's been there many times. Guy Palermo's been to the site.
Okay, but all over names you had left off.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh-uh, no, it's no problem. Because I went out there today and, uh, what I see, it looks real nice. Y'all did a good job on the pool. Uh, as a councilman, I think we need to be more aware when we, when they finishing these jobs, to start going out ourself and making sure these jobs completed. And there's nothing against you, because I'm looking at the bathrooms in Zemurray Park, not completed. The bathroom in, uh, Jackson Park, not completed. The bathroom in Clark Park, not completed. And I'm looking at your job, you did a good job. It looks real nice. But nobody that letting us know and the city council is not going out, to my knowledge, to see when these jobs completed. But you did a good job on the pool.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's a good idea, Devon, to have us go out there.
May we address those other bathrooms just briefly? Because I know that came up in the discussion about Kate Square. Those bathrooms are under a different contractor. And, and I believe that the council has been notified that that contractor is not performing. We have been working with them for a long time. There has been discussions about whether to pull their, even their bond for their performance. So we are doing the best work that we can. Andre has been involved with this in terms of getting those complete. Those are not complete. And those are a different design than what is proposed for the other restrooms.
Are we kind of towards the near end of that? That, or y'all still pretty much midstream on trying to figure out getting those bathrooms finished with that?
We're so close to the end. It's not getting done like Devon said. And I've instructed Andre to talk to the bonding company. We'll take the rest of the money and finish it ourselves. We're talking about putting the fixtures in, finishing up some painting and tying it into the sewer and water. So that's something we can do. He is, it's been a nightmare, this particular contract. We would never use him again.
So there's no way we could sue this company?
Uh, we, that's why they have bonds, is to finish their performance. So we're dealing with, with that through.
Our focus has been trying to finish the project and allowing the contractor to finish the project. But he keeps slipping behind and slipping behind. We're going to put the bond company on notice of default to the contractor and then go from there. But our focus has always been finish the project, not suing anybody or, you know, bond. Once the bond company gets involved, it's delayed. They get their own contractor in. They've got time limits within the bond to do that and certain rights. So our focus has been trying to finish the project, but we're about at the end of our road.
Well, we've had a meeting with he and he brought his, his attorney. And they were not happy that we contacted the bonding company. But we finished the project, that's all we asked them to do. So that's where we are at the moment.
Any other comments or questions on the Zemurray Park?
I do have to say that Frank Anzalone Contractors did a great job. They're, they were easy to work with. Anything that come up, they, you know, they would work things out. Anything that come up, they, you know, they would work things out. They're, they're, they were really, really good on this project, so.
Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine, a resolution to approve C-Senor Taqueria to sell high-low alcohol located at 1905 West Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana, 70403. The owner is 1905 Hospitality LLC. Conditions are all pending inspection from sewer, water, health department, and building inspection. Lacy?
Usually Jenny Wilson would be here to handle this, but she cannot be here tonight, and we definitely wanted to move forward with this item. This would be to approve, this is at the former Adobe location, and so this is a, a new restaurant coming in under different ownership, and I believe Glenn Alak is here to represent the owner. And this would be to approve pending these inspections. So there would not be a granting of this license until the inspections are complete and, and appropriate.
Glenn Alak, 17420, highway 190. Basically, we renovated the whole restaurant as cosmetically, and we're just changing the menu, changing the recipe, and same seating capacity, same everything else, so ATC already came in and gave us their license already, so we got a few more things to do. Probably within the next week, we'll have everything done.
What kind of restaurant is it?
It's more, is going to be a more authentic Latin food. We're kind of, you know, Adobe's always been around that Laoretta menu, and we're getting away from that, and everything's going to be fresh.
Good. Sounds good.
They already had alcohol license over there, right? So I'm just trying to, is it-
They already had it, but since we changed the ownership.
Okay, changed ownership.
We changed ownership, and there's some of the, you know, one of the, some of the owners are still there, there's just different owners in there as well. So that's why we had to reapply for everything with the state and, of course, with the city.
Liquor license is just in a different name, so, yeah.
Exactly. Same type of liquor is going to be served that was there before, it's just a different name. So it's just a process.
Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Final adoption of ordinance, none. Introduction, none. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.